Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. We appreciate you and your patience there. We're trying to support, well, we are supporting, the Eastville Band from ERHS. They are applying to get into the Rose Parade, and we think they have a very good shot this year. So, at this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And as a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. You can find those in the back on the table back there. At this time, we're going to do roll call. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Tesari.
Here.
Councilmember Rush.
Here.
Mayor Potem Rigby.
Here.
Mayor Lormore.
Here. All right. Tonight's invocation will be presented by Pastor Rob Norris of The Crossings. Sir. Ah, there it is. [laughing] Thank you, Pastor Nicholas. Please join me as we pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time we go, Lord, we pray for the agenda for tonight, Lord, that we seek your wisdom and your knowledge throughout all the things on the list. Lord, we thank you for the men and women that serve, we thank you for the first responders, we thank you for the police officers, the schoolteachers, everybody that makes this a great city and a great place to live. Lord, we pray that we would put you first in all that we do, and we would continue to seek you throughout the city of Eastville. Lord, we pray that there would be unity in this city like ever before, and we would continue to give you all the glory. In his name we pray. And then... Amen. Thank you, Pastor. All right. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Rush. Use your eyes. Join me in the salute to our flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, we are moving on to item number three, and that's additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on an item that the item, and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Mr. Aguilar, does city staff have any changes that they would like to see made?
We've had no requests.
No requests? Gentlemen, any additions, revisions? Okay. Say none? I didn't need any members of the public want to... Okay. Let's see here. Moving on to item four, presentations, announcements. At this time, I would like to invite, well, let's see here. Do we have, I have something here? Bear with me one second. Before we get to this item, and this is an important one, I want to read through this here, if you'll bear with me. All right. So, this is in recognition of Tamira, and from Eleanor Roosevelt High School. Is she here? Tamira? You're here? Okay. Let's give her a round of applause. All right. So, the internship program at Corona Norco Unified School District provides a basis for career preparation for 12th grade students by enabling them to acquire a firsthand knowledge of business. Students are provided the opportunity while interning to gain valuable work experience and make the connection between career and business while gaining work skills that will make them more employable after college. Tamira, and please help me with your last name. I want to get it right.
Tamira Shevers.
Tamira Shevers. All right. She was an intern with the city of Eastville for nine months, and where she shadowed the city clerk's department. And during her time as an intern, she learned valuable skills, including data entry, creating organizational logs, and assisting in records management with the city's rental registration program. I would like to thank you, Tamira, for your commitment to the city. And this is very cool. I think all of us want to wish you the best at San Jose State University, where you're going to be attending. Congratulations. And you're going to be majoring in engineering? Is that right? Wow. It's huge. All right. I need to sign this before I hand it over to you. But we're going to get up there. If you could all join me down there, we're going to take a picture with Tamira. Tamira, do you have anything that you would like to say, though?
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Say you love us, and you'd like to represent us.
That's very kind of you to say, but I think the pleasure's been all ours. So, thank you. Let's... [applause] Okay. We are in high school mode. We had the band, we had this recognition and appreciation, and now we get to hear from our student liaison. Oscar, sir, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, staff, residents. Rosa Parks Elementary had a successful Math Field Day pizza party Monday, May 7th. Kindergarten and 6th grade promotion pictures for tracks B, C, and T were taken just yesterday, Tuesday, May 8th. Rosa Parks Kinder, Lizard, Wizard Assembly for tracks A and C brought a great time to their students earlier today. Rosa Parks A-track 6th grade promotion practice will be on Thursday, May 10th, for tracks A and C. 6th graders will be having their field trip to Knott's Berry Farm Friday, May 11th. The parent volunteer appreciation tee for tracks A and C and T will be on Wednesday, May 23rd. For tracks B and D will be Wednesday, June 13th. Rosa Parks Night Talent Show is coming up. Auditions will be accepted electronically only before the deadline of Friday, June 1st. Clare Barn Elementary is currently preparing their end-of-the-year activities. Those coming up are student-staff softball game, 6th grade field trips, end-of-the-year dances, and the 6th grade promotion. Eastville Elementary students are still working very hard on their state testing. They had their play structure surface redone, and it looks great. Eastville Elementary will be having a volunteer social for parents on track, for tracks A and C on May 16th, and a PTA pizza party for gold memberships on Friday, May 18th. Dr. Augustine Ramirez intermediate are wrapping up their staff appreciation week, which concludes this Friday, May 11th. Their spring choir concert will be hosted this Friday as well, May 11th at 6:00 p.m. Augustine Ramirez Band Concert will be May 16th at 7:00 p.m. And on the following day, their spring guitar concert will be on May 17th at 7:00 p.m. Their annual Club Life Talent Show is scheduled for May 18th at 5:30 p.m. The 8th grade awards will be given on May 22nd, and their 8th grade promotion will be at Eleanor Roosevelt High School at 2:00 p.m. on the field. Eleanor Roosevelt, 2017-2018 school year, is coming closer to an end. Students have been studying extensively for their AP exams. This week, May 7th through May 11th has only begun AP exams. Tomorrow, AP government students will be testing, checking in at 7:00 a.m. in the gym due to the large impactful course at the high school. By the end of the next week, May 14th through May 18th, AP exams will have been completed. The community is invited to Eleanor Roosevelt Senior Awards Night, May 17th at 6:00 p.m. Please feel welcome to join soon-to-be graduated seniors on their recognition night, recognition night, for their hard work and dedication. I'll be there myself, and it would be very special to be able to have you guys there. The Senior Sunset Luau will be on May 18th from 6:30 to 9:00. Tickets are on sale for $15. Senior finals are approaching. May 21st and 22nd are the last two days of all seniors. Senior checkout will be on the following day, May 23rd. Avid Signing Day will be on May 22nd. The community is once again invited to witness seniors sign and promise to finish their college journey, which will soon begin. Last but not least, graduation will be on May 31st at the Ontario Citizens Bank Arena at 7:30. Thank you very much for your time. I'd be more than glad to answer any questions now.
Does anybody have any questions for Oscar? I do. I've got questions for him.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to let you get off easy. All right. So, you weren't here last time, right?
No, sir.
Were you winning another award or something like that?
We were, as Associate Student and Body Member of ASB at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, I was at our banquet.
Ah, okay.
Yes, sir.
That is important.
Yes.
Did you win an award at the banquet?
Yes, we won our awards.
Of course, of course.
And we were receiving our stools with our, with our names and our positions.
That's cool.
And I was fortunate to have community of, Commissioner of Community Resources.
Wow.
Thanks to you guys. Thank you.
Kudos. So, you had mentioned something that you thought would be special if we were at. What is that date?
That is May 17th, the Senior Awards Night. It will be at 6:00 p.m. Students from clubs at CSF, the California Scholarship Federation, will be receiving their awards. Students for, by literacy, bilingualism will also be receiving an award. I've been fortunate to be able to be one of those. Students who graduate dual, dual-language immersion program, which is a program where students do, they have Spanish, Spanish English learning from kinder to 12, and students will be receiving scholarships as well that night.
Very cool. And last but not least, congrats on that as well.
Thank you.
You mentioned Citizens Business Bank, so it's not being held at the high school this year, huh?
No, unfortunately, it's, we do not fit at the Eleanor Roosevelt High School.
Getting too big.
We are a very big class this year, so we'll be at the Citizens Bank Arena.
Okay.
And for students, tickets, extra tickets are for sale for $10.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
We are about between 900, from what I know for sure, are 900, but I believe it can get close to 1,000 and maybe more.
Wow.
I believe, yes. Our class is very big.
And our family needs to come and celebrate, too.
Yes, as well, yes.
All right. Well, cool. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. At this time, we're moving to item number six, and that is public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on the agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time that the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your concerns and/or your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mr. Aguilar, have we received any public comment cards?
Yes. The first public comment card we received is from Kylie Gallardo.
Excellent.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Gallardo, and I am Miss Marco, President of the City of Eastville. As we know, Eastville has not held a sweet pageant in a couple of years. With so many girls interested in representing, Eastville, the owners of Miss Marco Pageant, have acquired the Miss Eastville Pageant. Miss Eastville will be a community service organization. They'll be holding the Miss Eastville Pageant along with the Miss Marco and Miss Corona Valley Pageant on August 25th through August 18th. Please look for Eastville royalty in the near future.
Great. Excellent. And you're doing a great job, if I might say. I see you everywhere, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that date again? I'm sorry.
August 25th.
August 25th. Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Mr. Aguilar.
Our second public comment card received from Joel Siegler.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, city council, I mean, city members. My name is Joel Siegler. I am a member of the Eastville Chamber of Commerce, I'm on the board, and I would like to let you guys know that next Wednesday, we will have a community, a career fair and a expo at the Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and, you know, I think it's around 5:30, 6:00 o'clock in the evening. And it is free for all people. It counts that the Eastville Chamber of Commerce is picking up the tab, and because we have good people like Waste Management and a few other people, you know, donating their money to us, we can give these free things out to the community where we do not have to charge. And I realize that Waste Management is going to be coming up for a bid shortly, working along, and it comes down to apples and oranges. I do not want to tell you how to vote, but if it comes down to apples and oranges, you could give a nonparticular Waste Management, but I appreciate it on behalf of the Eastville citizens' community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Aguilar.
Our last public comment card received from Bill Asili.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council staff. My name is Bill Asili. I'm running for state assembly for the 16th Assembly of this district, which comprises the city of Eastville. And I wanted to introduce myself tonight and let you guys know a little bit about me. I grew up right here in Corona, just down the freeway. I'm a lifelong resident of the district, and I'm a former federal prosecutor, and I just stepped down to run for this seat. And I want to commend the city for the work that you guys have done here locally. Eastville is grown by leaps and bounds, and you guys have done a tremendous job. And what I'd like to see is Sacramento do a better job of supporting our local communities. And that's what I'm going to focus on when I go to the state. I would like to keep more of the money here locally, because I think if I'm looking at other than this in Sacramento, I want to make it all your life here better for everyone. Traffic has gotten worse over the years, not better. Toll has gotten more expensive. Crime has gone up. Meld theft is an epidemic. People get their lungs still breathing. Publicis is under eyes, and things have to turn around in our state. So, I'm committed to working hard to represent the city of Eastville and to helping us live a better life. And I want to say to the council this time, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Aguilar.
Our last public comment card received from Bill Asili.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council staff. My name is Bill Asili. I'm running for state assembly for the 16th Assembly of this district, which comprises the city of Eastville. And I wanted to introduce myself tonight and let you guys know a little bit about me. I grew up right here in Corona, just down the freeway. I'm a lifelong resident of the district, and I'm a former federal prosecutor, and I just stepped down to run for this seat. And I want to commend the city for the work that you guys have done here locally. Eastville is grown by leaps and bounds, and you guys have done a tremendous job. And what I'd like to see is Sacramento do a better job of supporting our local communities. And that's what I'm going to focus on when I go to the state. I would like to keep more of the money here locally, because I think if I'm looking at other than this in Sacramento, I want to make it all your life here better for everyone. Traffic has gotten worse over the years, not better. Toll has gotten more expensive. Crime has gone up. Meld theft is an epidemic. People get their lungs still breathing. Publicis is under eyes, and things have to turn around in our state. So, I'm committed to working hard to represent the city of Eastville and to helping us live a better life. And I want to say to the council this time, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Aguilar, any other comments?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. All right. At this time, we're moving to our consent calendar, and those are items 7.1 through 7.7. Are there, so all matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or a member of the public requests a separate action on a specific item. Mr. Aguilar, have we received any requests?
We've had no requests from staff.
None from staff, from the council? I have one. Yes.
I'd like to pull item 7.6. I have a couple of questions, nothing major.
7.6, crossing guard services, or no, I'm sorry.
Fire.
Fire. Okay. Excellent. Any members of the public wish to have anything addressed separately?
And move the balance. Second.
Okay. We have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Rigby.
Aye.
Mayor Lormore.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Excellent. Okay. I guess that means that we will start with 7.6. Our city manager, Ms. Nissen.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, members of the public. The item before you is the contract renewal for a cooperative agreement between the County of Riverside and the city of Eastville for fire protection, fire prevention, rescue, and medical emergency services. As you know, we are a contract city, and we contract fire and emergency services with CAL FIRE. This is a, an item that comes before the council fairly regularly. This contract renewal is a three-year term this time, as opposed to the last renewal, which was a two-year term. This is a standardized contract amongst all contract cities in Riverside County, and the CAL FIRE is moving to a three-year cycle to put all of the cities on the same renewal period, so that all of these contracts are coming due at the same time. The main difference in the contract from previous years is that we did open Fire Station 31 on April 19th of 2017. So, that did increase our fire protection services slightly as far as personnel costs. So, this contract does represent a full service year of full staffing at both stations. The city also purchased a fire truck during that time, and in addition to, as I said, opening a new fire station. The other changes that have come across over the years from the beginning to present are the addition of a paramedic unit and additional equipment for that paramedic unit and subsequent equipment for the second engine. Other, other items that are perfunctory, and this is a perfunctory agreement in nature, but the, this particular agenda item does, does include the projections for fiscal year 18, 19, 19, 20, and 2021. And as you can see from the attachment to your agenda packet, CAL FIRE does put in a, in the fine print that it's an estimate, because every year annually, CAL FIRE issues, issues a new state rate matrix, which delivers the incremental increase, if they have one that will be affecting staffing costs. That actually has just come down from CAL FIRE, so there, this estimate, as, as is attached to the agenda item, does not reflect a $12,000 increase that will be coming shortly. With that, I would be happy to answer any additional specific questions.
Excellent. Mr. Rush.
Sure. Thank you for the update. Clarifies one of my questions. Do we have an detail on what the previous increases were year-over-year? I'm looking at about 5% over this three-year. Do we know what it has increased from? Is it relatively the same? That's the first question. And then, is that additional 5% going forward through '21 labor increases, just general increases, or is there anything that's specifically slated that is inclusive in that 5% more or less?
So, the, the year-over-year increases that we have sustained here at City Hall have been partially related to personnel costs, that's, you know, contract negotiations, and then, but the bulk of the increase has been largely due to opening a second fire station, which, which required additional staffing and additional resources in the form of another engine. The, what we project for our budget is we look at the increases that we have sustained relative to personnel costs and benefits, and we average that out and amortize it over years moving forward. So, we're not getting caught off guard. We're using kind of worst-case scenario. What we're building into the 18, 19 budget is approximately a 6% to 7% increase.
Okay. And then, is...
So, we, so we have planned for the $12,000 that they're, they're giving us at this time.
Is there any volatility in yours going forward with the labor agreement coming in, in the middle of this? I don't know when you're, do you have an existing labor agreement, chief?
We do.
And when is that go till?
We're currently in year two of a four-year agreement.
Okay. Okay. That's all the questions I have. I didn't move the item unless there's anything else.
There are some more. No? You're good?
No.
Mr. Platt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick question. I didn't see it in the, the board packet. Just, just a real quick question. What was our, what is our estimated cost for the 2017, 2018 year this year? And what is the, if we have it on, if not, just as I'm out of curiosity.
If you want, give me one second. I'll pull that from our budget document, our draft budget, if you want to hold on.
Yeah.
If you have any other questions that you need for Chief Scribner, then I can go ahead and look this up while you're asking.
Well, she's looking for that. Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. My first question, if I can get back to it. There's a clause in the, in the contract that says that we have to give notice one year in advance. Is that how this contract is that we're currently in also? Do you know?
Yes. It's standard language in, in every contract that's written.
Okay. And then, what are the, what are the repercussions if there's no notice given by either side? Is there anything? Because I didn't see there in that contract, and I don't know if this is more of a legal question, but there was nothing that said, I mean...
Yeah, I would defer that to the, to the city attorney for what the repercussions would be, because that would be in breach of the contract. As far as the, the specific ones, what it would be, I'm, I'm not specific on it.
I guess my question is, if there's no notice, is it an automatic renewal or anything like that? Or an extension or any kind of...
This agreement doesn't provide for a holdover period, if you will. So, if the city did not give a timely renewal, I guess technically the county could, could possibly refuse to provide services. However, I think that that would probably be pretty unlikely unless you were extremely late in providing that notice, and they just weren't able to.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure there wasn't any type of automatic renewal, extension, or anything.
No, no, there's no automatic renewal in it. And it also, it, it's not only on, on the city side, but it's also on the county side that they have the, the ability to do that. It protects the city as well, where they can't just decide tomorrow we want to pull out and leave the city without public safety.
Exactly.
So, it protects both sides.
Okay. And the other question that I had was, is I noticed from 2016 to 2018 that it was the renewal of the two-year period, now we're going back to the three-year. And as the city manager mentioned, it's kind of to get back on, on track. I guess from a city standpoint, is there any benefit to us going from a two-year to a three-year?
No, no benefits, because the costs aren't going to change between, you know, year-to-year other than, like we talked about, the, the costs that may go up with labor, those types of things. What they did is, back when we renewed it for two years, they were putting all the cities on a two, three, or a four-year contract, and they were trying to get everybody on the same timeframe. Well, with that two-year contract, the last time, it's put all 20 other city partners on the same renewal cycle, and it's the county's preference to go to a three-year contract.
Okay.
So, Councilmember Platt, to go back to your original question, some of the staffing costs were included in the last budget workshop meeting. So, 17, 18 estimated costs, we're projecting through the end of this fiscal year, which doesn't end until June 30th, is 4.2 million. And then you have your costs, which are included in the staff report, plus the $12,000 increase that is coming. We do project out to 2021, if you want those numbers.
Yeah, I see the, I see that in the staff report. It was just that, just that year, the 17, 18 year, this year.
Yep. 17, 18 is projected to end at 4.2.
Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen? All right, we have a first. Do we have a second? A second. All right. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Rush.
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari.
Aye.
Mayor Potem Rigby.
Aye.
Mayor Lormore.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. Before you this evening is a second amended and restated employment agreement with your city manager, Michelle Nissen. Previous action on this item were, in October of last year, the city council performed a performance evaluation of the city manager, and then subsequently in November of that year, a compensation and classification study where the city looked at compensation levels for city managers in comparable cities. This spring, in, at your April meetings, I held closed-session labor negotiations with you where we discussed the terms and conditions of, of your city manager's employment agreement, and the agreement before you this evening reflects what was presented and discussed in your closed sessions. The substantive changes that are being proposed are increase in base salary to, from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and a provision that would allow for future merit-based increases at the discretion of the city council based on performance. And then, also, an increase in the amount of vacation time that the city manager is allowed to cash out. She's currently held to the same standard as all other city employees, which is two cash outs per year of forty hours each for a total of eighty hours, and it would be doubled now for two cash outs of eighty hours each for a total of a hundred and sixty hours. There's numerous other revisions that I have proposed to the agreement that are non-substantive in nature, I think are just clarifications and making sure that we have a contract that is consistent with existing personnel rules. With that, I am happy to entertain any questions.
Excellent. Do we have any questions at this time? Gentlemen? Okay, Mr. Aguilar, have we received any public comments on this?
We've had no requests.
Okay. Do we have any discussion, gentlemen? Okay, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move approval.
We have a first, second. We have a first and a second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Right.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number nine point two, and it is stated here to reject all bids for traffic signal battery backup project, and, let's see here, Craig is, who's going to be presenting this one tonight? Joe?
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Mr. Mayor Protem, council members, Joe Indrawan, city engineer, contract. Before you this evening, I'm sitting for Mr. Craig Bresch, who is out of town, and the title is reject all bids for traffic signal battery backup. We have a project in the budget for fifty thousand dollars for battery backup. Just for your information, battery backup is a device that we add at traffic signals, and we like to have it on every traffic signal so when there's an outage, the signal is not going to have a blackout, but the battery backup is going to function for several hours to sustain the power until normally the outage would be coming back up within the next couple hours or whatever. So, we, we bid for this battery backup for ten locations, and the result is way over our budget. The two bids we received cost about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, so beyond our budget. So, upon review and talking to the experts in this, in this field, we found that we can do a better job and they can do a better job giving us a better cost, better price for the battery backup. So, the recommendation tonight before you is to reject all bids for the traffic signal battery backup and direct staff to modify the specifications and the scope of the projects and to rebid the project. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, gentlemen? Yes, Mr. Rush?
I'm just curious, who missed the mark here? Did we miss the mark? Did they miss the mark in proposing this combination thereof? And then, secondly, you indicated that not all streetlights in the city are backed up. What's the total cost? Do we have a total cost for retrofitting everything, or is that just so insurmountable that?
We, due to the, to the amount of, of the, of the budget that has to be placed, the staff is trying to do it incrementally, maybe like fifty thousand dollars, like five, six locations per year. We have about fifty traffic signals. Approximately now, we have about like ten or twelve of them with battery backups. So, we're trying to prioritize a location based on the, the most important, the arterials. This is what we have inherited from the county, and all the new traffic signals has a backup. This is just on old signals that have been placed in the process before we became a city. So, to answer your question, who messed up on this, I believe staff and also the contractors, we have some parts of this, we should have been doing a better job and, when we did the budgeting, and we thought the, the, the cost is going to be like around five, six thousand dollars per, per backup, per battery, but turned out to be about ten thousand dollars per, per backup. So, upon receiving all these two bids, which we are quite surprised because some of the big names in the market did not even bid for the project, I don't know why, so we contacted other neighboring cities and who are using battery backups, and we learned from our error that we did in the past, and we tried to rebid by reducing, redoing the scope of work and, and be more specific in the, in the unit that we're looking for.
So, if and, and when we rebid this, are we going to reach out to those folks that didn't apply and ask why?
Actually, we have been doing that right now, and then, then we've been exploring and then expanding our pool of contractors who can be doing this for.
Okay. And do we offer any type of local discount or preference? You know, I mean, there's not a lot of vendors in the city, obviously, but, you know, I've seen some where it's, you know, within a certain radius, they give you a five percent cut or something like that. Just maybe any incentive, incent, incentives?
Well, I, I don't believe we have an ordinance that allows that, but if a city council wishes to do so, I can speak to the city attorney to see how, in the past, we can either create a procedure or policy or, or some kind of, I don't know, maybe Ms. Vega can answer that questions. I know I've worked in, in other agencies where they have that kind of policy.
Yeah, like Riverside County has it, but they have a wide spectrum of people to choose from where, you know, if we're just going to, if it was local to the city, we, we got slim pickings.
Right.
If you'd like me to respond briefly, I've actually done a lot of work on local preference ordinances very recently, and there's actually a pretty wide range of options and, and different methods that cities and counties use to achieve some level of local preference. So, it's definitely something that can be done and incorporated into, into your purchasing policies. Just recently worked on one that I think is, is a great model, actually, that provides local preference, but if they're not the lowest bidder, requires them to match the lowest bid to receive the contract. So, you're still rewarding to local business but not spending more money than you would otherwise have to spend.
I have no further questions? Okay, Mr. Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joe, thank you for this. Just kind of following up on Councilmember Rush's comments, with our budget being fifty thousand and the, the bids coming in more than double, we feel confident that with restructuring the scope of work that we'll be able to, to be within our budget or close to-
Yes, sir. Upon, upon talking to a couple of the leaders in the industries, they have assured us that it's actually for an existing battery backup for replacing for existing signals, they have a discount project that we just found out about it and which about thirty percent or so. So, this is something that we're going to explore more. And also, for the new budget year, we are at the end of this fiscal seventeen eighteen. We may be able to push it a little bit a month or so, so we can combine the two budget year to get more battery backups when we go out to scope it out and bid it out again.
Great. And last question, all of our new traffic signals that we're having installed, are those already having the battery backup system included?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's going to be the specifications, yes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Aguilar, have we received any comments?
We've had no requests.
Okay. Excellent. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Move.
We have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're moving on to item nine point three, and that's an agreement regarding streetlight, street light acquisition. And, Joe, we get to hear from you again.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, city council members. This item, I am happy to report, I feel this is like a historical and monumental event and also report or decision the council is going to make tonight. We've been working on this since two thousand fifteen or so. It's agreement regarding streetlight acquisition by streetlights, meaning Southern California Edison, SCE streetlights. As, as a background information that we want to give the council, since two thousand twelve or so, two thousand fourteen, actually, WR COG has developed a streetlight program on behalf of its member jurisdictions, which is cities and western Riverside counties. And in October twenty fifteen, WR COG began a streetlight program to identify whether it's possible or not to have, to acquire a streetlight from SCE, so we can have more control and we can have conversion to LED, which is a low emission, lighting, lighting emission diode retrofit support, which has a much better quality lights than what we have right now. We have now is a low-pressure sodium or high-pressure sodium light. Better light, better energy savings, and, and, and all the positives. And the industry has been, LED industry has been around for quite some time, but this streetlight's been catching up finally in about ten years ago or so. So, the program began working to facilitate the development of, of working together with SCE and other jurisdictions, and staff, and JCSD staff have been working together because we have a unique situation in Eastvale. All the lights in Eastvale, they are all, except twelve of them that we own, they are all under the accounts of JCSD through SCE. It's all SCE lights, not our lights on JCSD's light, but the account itself is being held by Aruba Community Services District through the LMDs. So, we're thinking of, you know, we, we, we have the lights in our jurisdictions and our city limits, why not, when we purchase that, we can transfer all those lights to the city of Eastvale? So, numerous meetings have been, have been held between staff and including two joint meetings within the council and the board of directors of JCSD. The latest meeting was April seventeenth, two thousand eighteen. Upon numerous meetings and discussions and trying to work out all the deals, getting involvement of city attorneys and their attorney, finally, at the meeting on the seventeenth, special meeting, council and the board have decided to move forward with the items that we have tried to put together, and that's a great news, a great compromise. And so, tonight, this agreement before you is to itemize a couple of things. I just want to share the council here, the key issues are, JCSD, as long as a city, have agreed to purchase the lights from SCE. JCSD is going to purchase the entirety, about six thousand lights, but only four thousand within Eastvale boundaries. And these four thousand lights will be transferred to the city of Eastvale upon purchase from, from SCE. What's interesting is that only Eastvale has some financing agreement with WR COG Regional Financing Program. JCSD is not going to take the financing, but we do. So, JCSD is going to continue the administration upon this transfer of the four thousand lights. They're going to continue the LMD administrations until January twenty twenty-one, upon which they, the city and JCSD would revisit the possibility of transfer of the LMD from JCSD to the city of Eastvale. So, JCSD, also part of the agreements, is allowed to use about six hundred light poles or fifteen percent, whichever is greater, for their own use. They can put their radio for their connection between the well sites, between their needs and, and other things. So, this agreement has included this, this clause. These are the key issues, among other things, that are in the agreement. The next item is after the agreement is, is executed, this dates, I'm so pleased to report tonight that today at about two o'clock, there was a conference call between SCE, JCSD, the city of Eastvale, and also WR COG representative, Mr. Tyler Masters, who is here tonight. SCE said, hey, let's talk about how we're going to transfer this, how we're going to transition all these lights. So, I'm sure they know about all this timing, so the call was very timely before the meeting. So, based on the meeting today, upon, upon the execution of this agreement, which is tonight by the city council and Monday night by JCSD board, both JCSD and Eastvale staff would reach out to Edison requesting the transfer of these four thousand lights from SCE, I'm sorry, from JCSD to Eastvale account. Okay, that's the first, the first milestone. The second one is between May and July twenty eighteen, SCE is going to start conducting streetlight transition activities, which is, they're going to do pole-to-pole inventory. They're going to hire a consultant, a contractor, going to check every pole, the type of pole, the height, and, and the label of the pole, so they can inventorize the whole thing, and the data would be given to us upon completion of that, which is sometime in July or August. We would be able, Eastvale and JCSD will be able to review and verify that the data that JCS, that SCE has is correct. When all that's completed in August of two thousand eighteen, which is a few months from now, SCE is ready to issue bill of sale, issue invoices, so we can, we can pay them off. So, before that, we need to have the money. So, that's why sometime in July of two thousand eighteen, we need to close the financing aspect with WR COG Regional Streetlights, and the detail has been worked out now and is being worked out with, with WR COG and also PFM, which is the consultant for this financing program. September and beyond, we still have to do all the details with JCSD, with WR COG, as far as the maintenance, as far as the LED retrofit, where we're going to start. That is going to be all the details that are going to be done, and the date is going to be determined at that time. So, these are the milestones that we have right now, and, and I'm pleased to announce, I mean, to share with you tonight that the agreement is here, but the agreement will not be signed and completed until Monday, which is the fourteenth. After this report, I will be presenting another report regarding the agreements with WR COG, but the recommendation tonight is just to approve this agreement with JCSD and to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary agreements and documents related to this streetlight acquisition. I'm happy to answer any questions, council.
Excellent. Any questions? Yes?
I don't have any questions, but just, just to comment, I want to thank you for, I know there was a lot of time spent on this, a lot of back and forth. I want to thank Michelle, Joe, and the rest of the staff that worked so hard on this, and then Councilman Plot and Councilman Rigby. I know they were, you know, involved heavily and, and were able to help keep the ball rolling, and I'm just happy to see that it's finally getting done. Thank you.
I second everything he said. It was awesome. Mr. Plot?
Yeah, I'd like to just echo the same words, you know, not, not to thank ourselves, but just straight to thank staff. Yeah, thank you, staff, it's been awesome. Thank you, it's been a long, you know, a lot of work and, you know, a lot of work coming, so, thank you, Joe, Eric, Michelle, rest of staff, thank you so much. And also, to thank, you know, Todd Corbman and JCSD staff to, you know, to come to a compromise somewhere, you know, to find that middle ground to make this happen. It's, it's, it's a win for the, you know, for the Eastvale residents, they're going to get better lighting, right? You know, it's a better illumination of lights and, and also a cost savings to the, to the city in general, so into the, to the residents. So, it's a big win, so, great job.
Mr. Rigby?
Don't want to get you guys sick of it, but I just want to echo them. But I, I also want to thank my colleagues up here for their support. As Councilmember Plot and I met numerous times with staff, it was one of those things that we knew that we had the support of our, of our council because we had the best interest for our community. So, thank you to my colleagues up here for their support through this. But then also, we've gotten to know WR COG really well. So, thank you for all you guys have done. Obviously, without you guys, this wouldn't even be possible, so thank you for all you guys have done, the many, many meetings that you've been at. We appreciate all that you guys have done, so thank you for being here also tonight.
Ditto.
No, you, you know, this is, this is, this is a milestone, as Joe stated, and appreciate everybody's hard work on this, and the two council members on either side of me did a ton of work in conjunction with our hard-working staff. So, this was absolutely a team effort, so congratulations, everybody. But we still need to pass this, so, Mr. Aguilar, have we received any public comments?
We've had no requests.
Okay, we, we just did a lot of discussion already, but do we have any further discussion, gentlemen?
I would motion to approve if there's no further discussion.
Second. Okay, we have a first and we have a second. Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. Let's do it. That deserves a clap, right, guys? Go Team Eastvale. All right. We're moving on to item nine point four, and that's the financing and implementation agreements to purchase and retrofit Southern California Edison streetlights. Joe?
Third time in a row. All right. Sir?
Mayor Protem, city council members, good evening again. This is the second agreement tonight before you. This is, I think is the easier part for me to present because I don't know much of this, so if you have any question, Ms. Tyler Masters and Ms. Laura Frankie may be able to answer, but I'm going to try this anyway. This is a finance- Um, this is a financing implementation agreements to purchase and retrofit the SCE lights. Um, before you tonight, we have multiple agreements and, um, these agreements have to be, um, executed by city council and WRCOG. Number one is for financing, um, uh, for the implementation agreement, the escrow agreement, paying agent agreement, all this, um, uh, escrow mumbo jumbo that, um, we need to do this and, and, um, but I want to just share with you that this agreement tonight is gonna cover the lights that we purchased from JCSD, which is a four thousand twenty-seven, uh, which numbers would be, um, corrected or revised upon the final inventory, plus the twelve lights that we own, so four thousand thirty-nine, let's put it that way, so, but this number may change. The cost to purchase this is approximately four point four million dollars, and this are based on the financing items that we have. Um, we have the interest rate that apparently has been climbing up and nothing we can do. And when this was prepared, it was like below five percent, but now it's like five point five percent. So we need to, uh, do the best we can to lock the rate and, um, so it won't go up too much. Um, but in any case, um, we have some benefits. Uh, we're gonna spend about four point four million dollars, uh, we're gonna finance that over a period of fifteen years. And, uh, for the next twenty years or so, the benefit's gonna keep coming back, um, through the, uh, energy savings, cost savings, and the savings itself, over twenty years, about three point nine million dollars. Uh, not to mention about the savings on the LED, the brightness, the safety issue, um, and, um, the control that we have and if the light got hit by a car and, and all those maintenance and operation that has been ironed out through disagreements. So tonight, before you, we have multiple agreements. Um, I can read this, uh, recommendation, um, um, hoping that I can read correctly. Um, the recommendation be, action before you is to find the participation in the program is exempt from review under CEQA. And number two, uh, we adopt resolution to authorize execution and delivery of, one, equipment lease and purchase agreement with Bank of America Leasing and Capital. Included in that is an escrow and account control agreement with Bank of America Leasing and Wilmington Trust National Association. And agreement number three is, um, agreement but paying agent agreement with Bank of America Leasing and, uh, Capital, with, uh, WRCOG and Wilmington Trust National Association. And the last one is implementation agreement with WRCOG is essentially, uh, in the form that we have, uh, attached. Uh, this agreement has been reviewed by city attorney and, um, there are many blanks in here, it's like normally, um, all the escrow papers. Uh, the agreement to be initial right now, but it's going to be completed and executed when the financing terms are, are finalized at the end before we sign the paperwork. So, um, um, also, we're gonna authorize, the council would, um, is recommended to authorize city managers to execute all these agreements, um, with the city attorney's final approval on the condition that JCSD approves their agreement on May fourteenth, which is Monday. And the other one is, uh, to authorize the city manager to make changes to the agreement prior to execution in order to lock the financing rate. That concludes my presentation, council. Um, I'm happy to answer your questions tonight.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council at this time? Mr. Rigby?
Thank you. Just for the public's clarification, Joe, can you go over the breakdown of that cost on, uh, the second page of the staff report? Because when we hear four and a half million dollars for the purchase of the light poles, it sounds like a lot. The fiscal impact?
Yes, sir.
So the, the purchase of the light poles includes more than just the actual purchase of the light poles?
Yes, sir. Um, the, the, the light pole is gonna be purchased about four thousand thirty-nine and we would purchase the light from Edison, but this four point four million dollar cost would include the purchase, which is, I have that in attachment number five. The purchase itself is about, um, two point nine or three point one million dollars and then there's a retrofit cost, um, this is gonna be close to a million dollars, eight hundred seventy thousand dollars. So after we purchase that, we're gonna incrementally or in phases, and this is something that has to be ironed out later, what area is gonna retrofit it first, which is the arterial first or, uh, or the residential, uh, second, that has to be done, um, so as we go, we're gonna pay for this retrofit. And we have Siemens, uh, which already hired or actually contracted to WRCOG, um, regional maintenance and operation contract to do that. They're gonna do the retrofitting, they're gonna do the maintenance and operation after the retrofit is complete and done. So yes, uh, that, that four point four million dollars just sounds big, but it includes many different items, including the financing costs itself.
So it includes the purchase, the retrofit, um, a contingency, it includes everything?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Joe.
Excellent. Um, a- any other questions at this time? Mr. Aguilar, have we received any public comment cards on this?
We've had no requests.
Okay. Um, any further discussion from the council?
A move approval.
Second.
We have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lorrimore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we are moving on to item nine point five, and this is notice of franchise non-renewal to solid waste haulers. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Before you today, uh, we have the solid waste haulers, uh, wind down, uh, notice, uh, and we're asking for your execute, uh, your authorization to execute a letter to wind down, uh, which would, uh, if, if executed prior to, uh, June first, uh, would terminate the contracts, uh, in, uh, twenty twenty-two and, um, there is, uh, no, um, there is, there's nothing stopping either waste hauler from renegotiating with us in that, during that time or, or, or going out for an RFP in a competitive process, uh, during that time as well. So, um, uh, you know, the, this is just, uh, to protect, uh, the city's interests, um, a- and making sure we have the best franchise agreement and the best, uh, uh, haul, uh, solid waste collection fee for our residents and businesses of Eastvale.
Excellent. Um, are there any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Mayor? Yep. Mr. Tesari?
Yeah, this, uh, obvi- this doesn't mean it's obviously gonna go out to a, uh, uh, bid automatically, it's something that, as you mentioned, we can renegotiate and as long as we get to terms that we can all agree on, we can renew the existing contract.
That is, that is correct. If that is the, the, the direction that the council wishes to go, um, we can, we can work with, uh, both so- all solid waste haulers, there's a number of different approaches we can, uh, take over the next four years. But if, but if we don't take action by the end of the month, uh, then it automatically renews and, and the contract would extend into twenty twenty-three, so, um...
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions at this time?
I, I do have one comment.
Uh, yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Plot?
Yeah, one of, I think this is, I mean, when you look at negotiating contracts and things like that, I, I think this is the best approach to take is, you know, do you have this wind down period, you know, but I would, you know, to get, and I know, we, thank you for coming from Waste Management, but I, I, I think one of the, in order to get the best deal possible, you know, and this, this is just a matter of business, you need to take, even though someone, they put their best foot forward, unless it's a mind-blowing deal, right? If you put the, you gotta put this out to bid at some point. I know we're not there right now, we're, we're at several years down the road, but just for the sake of, if I'm not on the council anymore, what now you can go back notes, i- as a, as a sake of just doing business right, you need to take these things out to bid to put some pressure from the current vendor in order to have other vendors be in the mix and to get the best deal possible. And if Waste Management is right for the ven- is, for Eastvale, they will come up with the best bid possible. I respect the comments of, of Mr. Seagler, saying what they do for the community and for the service. Uh, yeah, one sec, is, oh, you wanna make comment?
No.
Oh, sorry, thank you. So out of respect for Mr. Seagler, I, I know they're a great ally to the Chamber of Commerce, uh, they do, they sponsor a lot of activities in the City of Eastvale, but when we're talking about business and what's best for the citizens, right, the reality is, is our, our franchises aren't near where it's supposed to be and the rates aren't as, aren't that good. And you take the comparison to other cities, it's pretty dreadful if I wanna, if you wanna be very clear. So in order, and we, and my, Todd and, and myself, uh, you know, have been in the discussion along with staff for probably the last year, year and a half, to address these concerns, um, and nothing has been brought to the table. What that shows me is Waste Management values the contract, the extension of the contract and not the customer, right, which is the City of Eastvale. So in order to put that pressure, you have, at the point when it does come to bid, you have to take it out to bid. Because no, you will, you will never get a full integral answer from a vendor or the trust from vendor until you really do it to bid and put it, put their backs against the wall. It's the, it's the proper way to do this, it's typically what I do every day for work and a living, is I deal with stuff about the same dollar amount of value and you have to do that. So, um, just my comment on that, I appreciate this wind, I think it's great, but as years ahead and we, and when we get to the point, 'cause it's gonna be years when we start looking at other, um, if we're gonna renew or not, um, I really think that staff and council should be looking in the direction of saying, hey, we need to look at other vendors as well. And I think it's the appropriate thing to do. And that's all I have.
Do we have any questions at this time?
I do, but I'll wait to talk to the speakers.
Okay. At this time, uh, Mr. Aguilar, do we have any public comment cards?
Yes, we received one public comment card from Glenda Chavez.
Mayor Lorrimore, if I could add one comment, we do, for the benefit of the public, we do have two waste haulers, so this, uh, wind down notice will impact both waste haulers. The second waste hauler covers everything north of Belgrave within the City of Eastvale's boundaries. So this will impact both waste haulers. Uh, one of our waste haulers hasn't, uh, does not have an objection to the wind down notice and that they would look forward to working with us in the near future.
Okay. Excellent. Um, Ms. Chavez?
Good evening, Mayor Lorrimore and council members. Before I do, um, I wanna say that Waste Management doesn't have an objection to the wind down as well. Well, as you know, I'm Glenda Chavez, who's a resident of Waste Management. Waste Management considers itself a longtime community partner of its community scale. Our drivers are in your city every day and I work closely with them, members of your staff, your seated leadership, to provide the best service possible. To be quite honest, I'm surprised to find out that this important item is on the agenda tonight, specifically because I was under the impression that we were headed towards having a good, earnest, especially with staff, to address the community's issues and agreements. And here tonight to express my commitment and to ask council to please direct staff to work with us to reach a new agreement. Based on previous discussions with staff, we are ready to renegotiate now rather than wait until the contract expires. One item that I do wanna mention, um, correcting on the staff report is that both, um, Waste Management's and Burtex contracts going to affect in two thousand and nineteen, it states that our contract wasn't affected in nineteen ninety-eight, which is incorrect. I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Do we have any further public comment cards?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Excellent. Um, Mr. Rush?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Uh, question for staff, what kind of notice did we provide to both the haulers in anticipation of tonight's event? Did we pick up the phone, call them, did we send a letter, or was it just posted on the agenda?
I sent an email to, uh, Waste Management last week and received an email back yesterday from them. Um, uh, so I did reach out to have a conversation with them and did not hear back until yesterday. I did speak with Waste Management's representative last night at the town hall meeting, um, and, uh, I spoke on the phone this morning with the Burtex representative and he had no objections and wanted me to share that information with you and looks forward to a competitive RFP process in the future.
Okay. And, and this, this wind down, as we're calling it, you had mentioned something by the end of the month?
Yes. I- in, in the contract, i- i- if, if we don't give a, a letter of notice, there's an automatic one-year extension every year at, at the end of, of May, um, if we do not give notice, uh, that another year extends, so, uh, so there's always a four-year wind down period.
Okay. And I'll admit, I haven't been intimately involved in, in the discussion, no other council members have, but it seems just to me this is a little bit premature in the process. If we are having ongoing negotiations and discussions with them, um, I'm not sure, you know, this seems to provide a little bit more of an adversarial point, uh, to those discussions and, and could possibly degrade them, so, you know, I think, I mean, I'm not necessarily in favor of this, we, might be possible to, um, continue those discussions and you said it's a year over year, so is it three-year automatic or is it one year and top of one year?
So, so if, if we do not give notice, i- it would extend the con- it would automatic, if we do not give written notice, it would automatically extend the contract another year out. Um, and so, um, if we weren't able to come to a negotiation that is acceptable to the council, um, you would ha- you would have, um, uh, it would be twenty twenty-three that the contract would expire rather than, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, you know, in deference to Councilmember Plot's position, you know, I work in, I have a lot of contracts with a lot of cities and, and so this approach just would kinda irk me the wrong way from a business perspective. So I mean, there's doing business and there's doing business, you know, in, in a professional manner. I, I think also, and given that I've, I think, been here the longest, you know, there's the bottom line, which I completely agree with, but it's not always the bottom line. Um, and if we do go in our RFP process, I think, you know, through the review, that's something that I would encourage whoever's reviewing that at the time, I'm not gonna be around here, but, um, to keep in mind, you know, I've only had experience with Waste Management and Burtex from the state's perspective, I've had experience with other waste haulers and other jurisdictions for work, but there is a lot of, as Mr. Seagler pointed out, there's a lot of equity that I think is, is valued, it's not a monetary value per se, but community partnership, community outreach, things of that nature, which they've definitely shown and I think, you know, whoever it is in the future, we need to, we need to identify that as well, because if we're getting additional half percent or, or one percent, but, you know, we're not having someone pick up the phone or help us with a, a couch on the side of the road or trash cans or, you know, disposables, things of that nature, it's all a balance. So, that's the only comments I have, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just to cut-
By, I wanna see, does, was there any question though on that? Did we? No, I think I have all my questions answered, but thank you.
I think to kinda answer partial of one of his questions about the negotiation process that has gone on, um, it has gone on, it's gone on for two years now, uh, and we haven't come to a conclusion. Um, I mean, every time that we've met, it's kind of been us putting something out and Waste Management kinda just sitting back and, I mean, no offense, it's part of what happens, but Waste Management just kinda is sitting back and saying, well, tell us what you want and we'll see if we can make it work. And we've done that and nothing's really happened. Um, we've asked them to come and present something to us and that hasn't happened. Um, we haven't spoken with Waste Management, we haven't had a discussion regarding this negotiation for, I don't know how long, if we've had one this year yet. Um, I think this is in our best interest, not to say that this won't allow us to continue to negotiate, we can still continue to negotiate as this goes on, but if we continue to, to delay this, then this, our contract gets extended. Speaking of that extension, I will say that I'm disappointed that we didn't know about this extension on Waste Management's side and on staff's side, um, that we didn't know that there was this, this, um, this extension. And I think it, it kinda goes back, we've asked Waste Management about other, um, fees of other cities, you know, where are we at, where are we at in comparison? Um, and I have a feeling we're very low, um, with our comparison of where we're at on fees and that's, um, my hunch as to why Waste Management hasn't sent us a proposal saying, hey, this is our best foot, this is what we're gonna give you, um, that that hasn't happened. I think this kinda puts into effect that we have to negotiate something or else we do go out to RFP. Um, but we have been actively negotiating, uh, or we've somewhat been actively negotiating, um, but it's been two years. I, I don't think it's the best interest of the city for us to continue to put this out, um, to, to extend this without giving the wind down. I think it's the best interest for us to do the wind down and to continue to negotiate. Um, I would agree with what, what Glenda said and I would like to direct staff for us to, um, to continue to negotiate with Waste Management, see if we can come to some kind of, of, um, contract extension before this four years happens. Um, but if not, then yeah, I, I, I would agree with Councilmember Plot. But if not, then yeah, I, I would agree with Councilmember Plot that if we don't come to a conclusion, we have to put it out to bid. And it needs to be something that, yeah, we're representing the city. It has to be favorable to us. And we are looking at other cities as to what they're getting. So that we aren't, I hate to say it, but we aren't being taken advantage of as residents and as a city and not getting the franchise fees, but yet paying high fees for, for our trash collection. So, just kind of a recap, we have been negotiating. I think this is in the best interests for both Waste Management and for the city. And I think it's very supportive to know that Vertec, as well as, as Ms. Chavez shared with us today, that they have no objection to a wind down. So I think it would be a mistake for us not to do the wind down with both of our waste haulers being, having no objective to the wind down.
Mr. Plot? Just want to kind of put a little more details to what Councilman Rigby, or Mayor Protem Rigby said and what Councilman Rush had mentioned. You know, part of, literally, I'm trying to find my notes on this when we last discussed. But it was relatively a year ago when we, they asked, what exactly you want? I don't remember the details, but I have it notated and no staff has it. Where's that, hey, we're looking at maybe having this as our, this number as our franchise fee and, and maybe trying to mitigate some of the, the, not to raise some of the cost to the, you know, to the citizens of Eastville. That was a year ago. And they, their answer was, we will get back to you on that. And I would like to ask staff a question. Has they got, have they got back to you in response to coming up with some type of, of an agreement or something that would reflect that?
Staff has, we've gone back and forth with Waste Management to secure a date that works for both parties. So it's been several months of telephone tag between staff schedule and Waste Management's schedule. So we haven't had a meeting. It's been probably five months since we've, we've met and discussed this.
My, so my point in saying that the frustration that I'm expressing is that they ask, hey, what is it you'd like to see? We put it out there in a meeting, in a, in a conversation, and nothing has got back to us. And it's, it's on the responsibility of Waste Management to respond back. So my frustration, and I know we talk about it from a professional aspect, but it again goes back to, I mean, if we are a very, you know, a valued customer of Waste Management, you have to, you kind of, kind of, there's got to be some responsibility and some accountability in I felt. And in, in concurrence with Mayor Protem Rigby, that, that hasn't happened. So now to bring a discussion, which is fine, I'm glad we, we want to engage that further, but to put some in the context of the history of what's, what's going on, yeah, we, we've, we've let them know what is it that we're looking for specifically in numbers and percentages. And there's been no response back. So in regards to getting a specific answer back from-
In fairness to Waste Management, we have been going back and forth with, between Waste Management staff and city staff. The, the crux of the issue is that you have this opportunity to provide a wind, a wind down notice. Should council proceed with that wind down notice, you also have the opportunity two months from now to rescind it. But missing the June first deadline does kick the can down the road and extend the contract further. This is a very opportune time to, to have some very fruitful negotiations and discussions between the waste haulers. And that does not, as Brian had indicated, that does not necessarily mean that this goes out to an RFP. But this is a window that we felt at staff level was very critical to take advantage of before we missed the June first deadline.
And I know that the discussion is not necessarily to go to the RFP. This discussion is about, it's about the wind down period. Obviously, I'm, I'm for that. But just wanted to put more context to the conversations that we've had and the meetings that we've had.
Correct. So you have the opportunity to negotiate during this four-year term. You have the opportunity to, to circulate an RFP. Or you have the opportunity to rescind the wind down notice that you have directed staff to, if, should you choose that, you can rescind. So you, there's a lot of options available to you.
And, and we look forward to working with both Vertec and Waste Management to address all of our, our ideas and concerns so that we can best serve the residents and businesses of Eastville and, and identify the correct and best value for the rate for our residents and businesses as well as our, our franchise fee for utilizing our infrastructure to collect the solid waste in our city. So we, we look forward to working with both of those companies to see if we can come to a negotiation that is acceptable to council. And, and should we not, we could always go out for our P and L later date.
Yeah. And like you said, those numbers that, Glenda, those numbers that we discussed in that meeting, however long ago it was, you know, hopefully they can come close to that. Maybe that's something that would be able to convince council to say, hey, we want to renew this contract. Absolutely.
So i- i- if I might, and Glenda, I would like to give you an opportunity to respond. But if I might, I, I want to address a little bit, and I know staff works very hard. And I, I know our, our waste hauler also does the same, and I think they've been good community partners, but process. I, I do hope, and it has already been stated that this will happen, but I would like to see discussions take place. And, but putting on, thinking into my job, my day job, I need good communications with the cities that I interact with. And I, I, this, I'm, I'm not coming after anybody, but if we can do a better job at that in terms of communicating, and I understand that there may have been some miscommunication along the line and between all parties involved, but if we can do a better job of notifying our partners as to an agenda item like this coming forward, I, I'd like to see that as we move forward.
I will make that commitment from now into the future for all waste, solid with our community partners of Vertec and Waste Management that we will reach out to them before we get a staff, a staff report to them.
I appreciate that.
And, and we just encourage the response when we reach out to them as well.
And, yes, and very valid point. And so I'm not pointing fingers just making sure as we move forward that we have that best foot forward.
Yes.
So Glenda, I, I don't know, there were a couple of statements made. I don't know if you would like to respond, but I would offer this opportunity to you if you would so like to do so.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a clarification we have in trying to set up a meeting from this minute or I know we're in this, as they said, that it was just a formality, but I know that we're in negotiations and reports meeting. So it's just something that hasn't happened. I mean, they're trying for the last couple of months since March to try to set something up. So it's something that unfortunately hasn't happened, but I think that moving forward, we can set something that can really, you know, get that discussion going.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any further discussion, gentlemen? Yeah.
Yeah, just, so this is specifically related to the financial aspect of it, not, not in any way related to service, correct? Yeah. Yeah, and I, I think Waste Management's been an excellent community partner. Been very responsive to, you know, requests that we've had, whether it's nonprofits or city events. So we, we do appreciate it and I'm confident we're going to work something out here, so.
Mr. Plot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify, I echo those words. I, I'm happy with the service that we're getting. Again, my, my only, my only tiff is, is has to do with our franchise fees and our, and the rates that our, that our residents are getting. That's it. And if we can get there and kind of have some proactive conversation in the direction that, that we've had before and to get to that point B, then yeah, that, that's, that's what my argument is about. So I know I've been a little harsh in my words, but that's the point, is to come up with something that we can get done. Or like I said, it would be in the best interest, I think, of the city to go out to bid.
Councilman Plot, so, so even with the wind down notice, all the contractual obligations of the agreement will continue to move forward. So, you know, we will continue to work with Waste Management. They do have their annual rate adjustment that is coming up. And so you will see that in an upcoming city council meeting. This, this wind down notice does not preclude them from exercising their contractual right, which is annual adjustment.
A question to that. Which, and I'm just trying to refresh my memory, which, there was two different rates we were looking at. What was the one that we agreed upon? There were two different types of rates and it was either we could choose one or the other. And I, does it ring a bell?
Oh, you're talking about the CPI versus the WST.
That's right. The water sewer trash rate, yeah.
Yes.
All these acronyms.
Yeah. Need a dictionary for all the acronyms.
All right. Any other discussion, comments from council?
Nope.
Okay. We, we have no further public comments, correct?
No further.
That's closed. All right. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve? Second.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Plot?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
No.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lorrimore?
Aye.
Motion passes four-one.
Okay. Excellent. We are now moving on. Thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate your being here. Moving on to item nine point six, and that is compensation for members of the city council and commissions. And that is submitted by Mr. Aguilar, Assistant City Clerk. Sir?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Lorrimore and councilmembers. At the February twenty-eighth council meeting, Councilmember Tesari requested that compensation amounts for the council and commissions be reviewed and presented to the council for discussion. To provide you with a brief background, there was action, the action previously taken by the council regarding compensation for both council and commissions were taken in October first, two thousand and ten, which is the day that the city was incorporated, as well as February ninth, two thousand and eleven, for the planning commission and March twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. So it has been about seven years since the council has last reviewed compensation for both the council and commissions. Per Government Code, section three-six-five-one-six, it allows for the council to enact an ordinance setting a salary for members based on population as determined by the last preceding federal census, a subsequent census, or estimate, or estimate validated by the Department of Finance. The salary may be increased by an amount equal to five percent for each calendar year from the operative date of the last adjustment. Council compensation was set at four hundred dollars per month due to the city's population at the time of incorporation. The monthly stipend has not been adjusted since the city's incorporation on October first, two thousand and ten. The city of Eastville's latest population number is validated by the Department of Finance or sixty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-five, and those numbers recently came out just about last week. And this allows for compensation to be set at five hundred dollars per month. If the council were to increase the compensation at the five percent per year since two thousand and ten, the adjustment would be a hundred and sixty dollars, bringing the total stipend to five sixty per month. It's important to note that any increase to compensation would not occur until after the next election, which is in November of two thousand and eighteen, which means that the rate or the compensation increase will not be effective until January of two thousand and nineteen. It is also important to note that this is not a retroactive payment and it would not go back in time. It would only be effective as of January of two thousand and nineteen. For the commissions, per Eastville Municipal Code, chapter two point seventeen point zero-two and section G, it states that each planning commissioner shall receive a monthly stipend for service on the planning commission and that stipend shall be set by city council resolution. Resolution number eleven dash zero-nine authorized stipends for planning commissioners at fifty dollars per meeting with a maximum of three meetings per month. The stipend amount has not been reviewed since February of two thousand and eleven. And for the Public Safety Commission, per chapter two point eighteen point zero-eight-zero states that members of the Public Safety Commission may receive a stipend for their services as set by resolution of the council. Resolution number eleven dash twenty-two authorized stipends for the Public Safety Commission at fifty dollars per meeting with a maximum of three meetings per quarter. The stipend amount has not been reviewed since March of two thousand and eleven. Tonight, staff is seeking direction regarding proposed changes to compensation and benefits for members of the council and city commissions. Should the council vote to increase compensation, staff will bring back an ordinance reflective of the council compensation change and resolutions to reflect the change of the planning and public safety commission stipends. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, excellent. Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for Mr. Aguilar at this time? Mr. Tesari?
I don't really have any questions. I just, just a comment. I did, I did ask for this to be brought up primarily because it's been eight years since incorporation and everything has stayed the same. And I think about council members like Mr. Rush, who've been here since the beginning. And I wanted a review, just to see if it was warranted. There's been conversation with council members from other cities who have discussed what their stipends are. And so I thought it would be interesting to have it looked at and see if an increase is warranted. And also, just to bring it to the public's attention, I, I've heard it from several different sources that there are some people in the community that think, that are under the misconception that council members are, this is like a full-time job. Although it, we have to work like it's a full-time job sometimes. But just so that people know how, how much the compensation for serving actually is. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions at this time? Do we have any public comments?
We have received no public comment cards.
Okay. We're back up here for discussion. Any further discussion?
Any recommendations?
Are we setting a rate? Go ahead, but no. That was my question. Are we just setting a rate?
Regarding that rate, I have a question on that. It says that compensation can be set to five hundred per month. If the council were to increase the compensation at five percent per year since two thousand and ten, it would go up to five sixty. So I'm, I'm kind of confused that it says that we can go to five hundred, but then it says five sixty. So which one?
That's correct. So back in two thousand and ten, the city's population, I believe, was forty-five thousand, approximately forty-eight thousand. So in between that number, when the city first incorporated, we, we established the compensation at four hundred dollars per month. Since the city has now grown in population to approximately sixty-five thousand, now the government code allows for five hundred dollars per month. Since the council has not authorized an increase since two thousand and ten and there's been an eight-year, eight-year difference between that time, it's essentially five percent of four hundred dollars times eight. So that would be twenty dollars times eight, which would be a hundred and sixty dollars, which would allow for the additional hundred and sixty. So you would be voting essentially tonight to increase your compensation to five sixty, but because the government code, now your population is within that amount that allows for the five hundred dollars per month. You would be essentially giving you the additional sixty dollars. So it would be five hundred and sixty. Is that correct?
So five hundred and sixty is outside of the government code then?
No, five hundred and sixty is allowed under the government code. Essentially, that would be the maximum that you could set for yourselves based off of your current population and the amount of time that you've been a city. You will see cities of similar population to Eastville where the council compensation could be quite a bit higher. And that is by virtue of the fact that they have been a city a lot longer and have been giving five percent increases to themselves annually for a much longer amount of time than, than Eastville has been able to.
Yeah, Mr. Plot?
Just a quick comment on this. Yeah, I, I agree with Councilman Tesari that, you know, there's a lot that goes into it and, and very little compensation. But, you know, for the benefit of the public too, what else the council members and the mayor receives are, if they choose to do so, there is also, and it's in the, it's in the package as well, but is the, the dental health vision insurance as well. If they choose to use it, they can get those. So there's another form of compensation in that aspect. I'm, you know, I, I think with the various increases, I know this is pretty increment, a very small incremental increase if we did move forward with this. But, you know, taking that we're increasing, you know, we increased the salary, right? We've added, we're adding several positions that are costly. I, I'm more on the fence not to move in this direction and just hold off for some time and maybe reconsider it later. Just for all the spending, I think that gives it appearance of a lot of, lot of spending. And there's things that we're going to be coming up with, there's other items that are going to be coming up in the next month or so in regards to public safety, these things. So I just, it's, it's all cumulative how much is spending. I know this is very little in retrospect, but I'm more kind of on the fence to where, you know, not really looking to, to want to do anything, just kind of keep it the way it is. So this is my two cents.
I, I would like to follow up on those comments, actually. The, the four hundred dollars that we receive right now is, that does not cover the amount of time that is put in that, that is without a doubt. But that being said, five sixty would also not do that either. The, some of the cities in that, in the packet reading through, I'm shocked, actually, at some of the compensation that other cities do receive. And I, I'm glad that we are not there. I, I believe that running for office, and I, I think that everybody up here is, is doing it, it's public service. It, it's not about additional hundred and sixty dollars a month. I mean, it helps cover gas. Um, I mean, it helps cover gas, uh, but because I, I believe that all of us expend more than that five hundred and sixty in effort, I, again, it's not about the money, it's about public service, and as such, I don't see a need to increase that dollar amount. Um, but that, that, those are my thoughts, but I'd like to hear from anybody else or hear a motion or something.
If I may, I, I would agree that, uh, we aren't in it for the money up here. Um, it's not, it's not something, I don't, and I'll be honest, I don't think a hundred dollars, a hundred and sixty dollars is gonna make a big difference to us right now. Uh, or at least to myself. I mean, that's what, maybe a couple of tanks of gas, if that, but, uh, I, I don't think that, I mean, it's something that's really necessary right now for us. I don't think a hundred and sixty dollars is gonna hurt the budget for the city per council member per month, but at the same time, I don't think it's gonna make a difference for us. So I, I think it's good for the, for the public to see, um, transparency, but I don't, I don't think it's necessary right now.
Alright, um, anybody have a motion? Further discussion?
Mayor Lormore, just for a point of clarification, just, um, also to note that the commission stipends are also up for discussion. Is it at the council's consensus just to leave the commission stipend at fifty dollars per meeting as well?
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I would say to leave it at the same. I mean, I, uh, in the staff report, it shows a, a chart of them going from fifty to seventy-five dollars a meeting. Once again, I don't know that, um, they're in it for the money. Um, I think going back to the mayor's comments, it's, it's public service, and I think that's why the commissioners are in it too. Um, at least my two commissioners, I haven't heard them say anything about the compensation, um, being too much or too little, so I don't think it's a, an issue for them. Um, so I would recommend that we, we leave theirs the same right now as well.
That's precisely why I wanted it reviewed. Yeah, exactly. Um, I, 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 I think that my colleagues probably feel the same way I do. I would do this for free just because it really is service, so is there a motion to get rid of, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, exactly. But, uh, no, I'm, uh, I'm not, uh, pushing to raise the stipend. I just wanted to have it reviewed. And if it was warranted, to at least have the option to do so. And it may be warranted when you look at the totality of things with, uh, all the, uh, different committees and, and, uh, boards that everybody here serves on. Uh, many of them are not compensated. So that's why I wanted it, uh, looked at. So I appreciate the work. Thank you. And I hope the, uh, public gained a little bit of insight into it, uh, what kind of service is involved and what type of compensation goes with it.
Alright, so I'm not hearing a motion to support this at this time. Does that mean we're good? We can just move on?
So there's a consensus amongst the council to leave the stipend at four hundred dollars per month for the council and fifty dollars per meeting for the planning commission and public safety commission.
The commissioners might get angry at us.
Do we need to make a motion just to keep it the same?
I, I think the, I think the consensus is quite clear as to the direction that the council is providing.
Alright, so we can move on to item nine point seven. And this is titled, "The City Council Legislative Committee." Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, uh, good evening again Mayor Lormore and councilmembers. Um, on August twenty eighth, two thousand and thirteen, the city council avoided, avoided, voted to appoint the mayor and mayor pro, pro tem positions to the legislative committee. Uh, at the request of Mayor Lormore, um, it was requested that the appointed positions to the legislative committee be reviewed and presented to the council for discussion. The city's legislative committee is responsible for creating a legislative platform for the city and for approving letters of support or opposition to various legislation that is time-sensitive and cannot wait to be put on the next city council meeting agenda. The legislative committee, as I mentioned, is currently comprised of the mayor and mayor pro tem positions and the city manager. And when an action is requested from the League of California Cities, the city manager forwards the request to the legislative committee and requests an approval of a letter of support or opposition. This only occurs if the matter is time-sensitive and action is needed immediately. And if the request can be processed through the regular city council agenda, staff will prepare the necessary, necessary reports to the city council for consideration. Uh, currently, the city's legislative committee is not part of the annual appointment process in December, and that consists of the appointments to the various regional boards, committees and subcommittees in the county and city. Um, we, staff is recommending tonight that the council amend the existing practice to include the legislative committee as part of the annual appointment process in December to base the appointments at the mayor's discretion and to request that Mayor Lormore tonight appoint or reappoint two council members to the legislative committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Do we have any questions?
Just a point of clarification. It says that the council, or excuse me, the committee is made up of the mayor and mayor pro tem. That's actually not the case.
Well, so that, that was, that, that, if I might take that one, that was part of this issue. Um, I had asked-
I think I served in it and didn't rotate out, so.
So I, I had asked, um, to make some changes, uh, a little while back, and then it was pointed out that we had actually, because this was not formally part of the, uh, appointment process, uh, I had made the appointment. Um, and that was apparently not what was in our rules. And, um, so wanted to make this committee like the other committees, uh, in a little bit more discretion. But, Mr. Aguilar, uh, you are much more of an expert on this. If you could clarify?
Sure. So, um, as I mentioned, in two thousand and thirteen, the item was brought before the council to, to create a legislative committee. So then in two thousand and thirteen, the council then actually authorized the city manager to create the legislative committee, and it was discussed amongst the council to appoint the mayor and mayor pro tem positions at that time. So the motion, uh, from that council then was to appoint those two positions to the council. Um, at this point tonight, we are able to go out and amend that original appointment of the mayor and pro tem, should the council desire, or if the council desires, they can leave the positions as the mayor and, right, mayor pro tem. It's really ultimately up to you tonight.
Any other questions?
No questions, just a comment. I think it's, uh, it's, it just makes sense to have the makeup of the committee be the same as the other appointments that are made by the mayor. Just makes sense to me.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
So when we did the appointments, didn't we, like you said, create this? And we made it, somewhat made an appointment that wasn't within our rules, I guess? Who was on that?
Currently, it is myself and Councilmember Rush. Um, and I, I would like to-
So if I recall correctly, it was, um, I think it was Bob's request, I don't know, I could be wrong, where things kept coming to us, and it was myself and Mayor Bootsman at the time. And we're like, well, or before it became us, we're like, well, we gotta get on city council and, you know, he, what, a lot of times what happens is, you know, staff will get an email, like, situation that happened today. I got an email from Mr. Tim Lynch, who is the billboard guy, asking us to do something on a, a bill and sign a letter of opposition. A lot of times those things are extremely time-sensitive, or the wackiness that goes on in Sacramento with gut and amens and things of that nature, it's like instantaneous. So we weren't able to get these things on council agenda quick enough, so we just, I think, kind of ad hocly, that's a phrase, created two people, and it just happened organically.
I don't think it's something that we need to attach to, um, no offense to you, mayor, but that we need to attach to positions such as the mayor or mayor pro tem. I think it just needs to be, um, according to what the mayor appoints. I don't think it needs to be assigned specifically every time.
I, I, I would, I, I'm of the same mindset. Any other comments? Okay. Alright, um, do we have any comments, uh, from the public on this?
We've had no requests to speak.
Okay. Um, back up here for discussion?
If no further discussion, I would move for approval to amend, um, the current legislative committee to be at the mayor's discretion.
Second. Okay. We have a first and a second. Um, as part of this, there is the, uh, appoint, reappoint two members this evening. Um, how do we wanna do, do we wanna do this in two parts?
Uh, yes, so we'll take the first motion and then the second.
We'll, we'll take the first motion. Let's do that. Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. Alright, well, perfect. Thank you for that. Um, to appoint or reappoint. When the appointments process, uh, when the transition took place from Mayor Tesari to myself, back in December, there was, it was not in my mind clear that we were going to, uh, that I was going to become mayor. And as a result, I did not plan in advance well enough, uh, as to appointments, and so it became haphazard. And in that process, uh, I did a terrible thing and it, Joe, I am so sorry, and he is crying over here in the corner. Uh, I, I made the mistake and reassigned too many positions to the point of removing you from almost everything. And that, that is not, that was not the intention.
I can read it writing on the wall, Mr. Mayor.
So what, what I would like to do, and I, I absolutely, just today, uh, Councilmember Rush, we went through one of these, um, fire drills related to a piece of legislation and a terrible piece of legislation at that. Um, and it, so it was very helpful, uh, what, doing that, and so what I'm about to do though, Adam, I'm going to be re, not reappointing you to this position, but that being said, I do want you to still forward me those emails when you get them, pretty please.
No, I, I object. I'm not willing to come off of this.
He's saying that jokingly, if you can't tell.
Crazy.
Alright, so at this time, I would like to reappoint myself, appoint Councilmember, uh, Tesari uh, to serve on the legislative committee, and, um, I- Are you good with that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you, sir. Alright, um, do we, did a, do we need a motion on this?
It's a move.
Okay.
Second.
First and a second. Uh, Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rush?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Lormore?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Wow, it's early and I know, look at this, look at this. Alright. We, we are moving to item number ten, uh, and that is the city manager report and city staff reports. Um, reports, please.
Just a quick update for you. We, um, conducted our, uh, second round of panel interviews for finance director. Just feels like it was just yesterday. So, uh, we should have a selection, probably by the end of next week, we'll be making a final decision. So you will be welcoming a new member of the team before the end of June, I would say. An executive level team.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other staff updates?
I just wanted to update you on the illegal dumping at, uh, Richland Communities. Uh, that was brought to our attention at the last council meeting. We have some pictures of, um, of what was occurring out there. Uh, and, uh, on April sixteen, twenty eighteen, code enforcement received a complaint on junk, trash and debris dumped on Richland properties located behind Orchard Park. Code enforcement, along with Interwest Consulting Group and Waste Management, worked together to clean up the illegal dumping at the location above. The trash, junk and debris involve several discarded items such as sofas, broken concrete slabs, large palm tree fronds, palm tree trunks, tires, mattresses and other drunk, uh, junk debris. We also found some used needles out there, so, um, it, it's not good. So on May second, twenty eighteen, code enforcement, which consisted of three staff members along with two staff members from Interwest Consulting Group and two staff members from Waste Management, came together and moved all the illegal discarded items that were i- illegally dumped. It took five point five hours to remove all the trash and ju, junk and debris, so this is a big time i- issue and, uh, use of staff resources, um, when, when people are, uh, illegally dumping in our communities. On May ninth, twenty eighteen, code enforcement was notified, uh, by Interwest staff that some illegal dumping, uh, dismantled tread, uh, a tre, treadmill right there was out there today. Um, so, um, th, th, this spot is becoming a, a, a location for, for dumping. Um, so we're gonna be working with all the property owners out there. Uh, Joe Indowan i- i- is diligently working with Richmond Communities, JS, J C S D, J D A, to fence off the area of public and possible erect no trespassing signs. This will assist in deterring illegal dumping in that location, and this could be a location for a future camera, uh, or, or video surveillance as we bring that, uh, item before you in the future. So just wanted to let you know, we are diligently working with this, but, uh, the illegal dumpers are staying in front of us, uh, so far in the city, and so um, we encourage residents, uh, to report it, um, to us as quickly as it's out there, and we appreciate all the council members that let us know when they see it in their neighborhood as well. So thank you very much, uh, and I wanna thank our code enforcement team a, and our, and our consultants and Waste Management for all the great work, um, in getting after these things. It's been a real team effort coordinating, um, uh, attacking these, and we, we try to get out there as quickly as we can, because the longer it stays out there, the more it attracts. Uh, um, and so, um, uh, so please re, we ask the residents and businesses to report this as quickly as possible.
Thank you, sir.
If I can, I was in communication with staff, with Joe and with, uh, Mario regarding this when it first came up. Um, and they did an excellent job, and continuing, staff's continuing to do an excellent job with, uh, getting um, additional measures taken care of so that this won't continue to be a si, uh, a dump site. Um, I was amazed at how much trash was dumped there, um, when they did do the pickup, but staff and J C S D and Waste Management have done a great job in, in getting it out of there, so thank you to, to everyone for that.
I'd also like to share with the council that at staff level, we are looking at, um, bringing back to council potentially an ordinance about vacant property maintenance, because once you address it in one area, it's like a moving target. It shows up somewhere else. So there was a tremendous amount of illegal dumping going on at the Walmart property until we had it fenced off, and now this is the flavor of the month. Um, and just recently, there has been some illegal dumping on the Vernola property right behind, uh, twenty-four hour fitness. So we need to start doing something about the vacant parcels to, to, uh, keep the access uh, restricted so that it doesn't become such a welcoming location for this type of activity.
And then, o, on that note, I, I'd ask, you know, if we could, if we do have the ability to acquire properties to be fenced, because I know a lot of property owners that are, you know, diligent, um, they're like Lewis, as soon as they, you know, even had an interest in the Popolos property, fence went up, and that's kinda their M O. Some are a little bit different. I don't know if we can absolutely mandate that, and it is a cost, but it's also a cost to us when we gotta pick up all this crud, so.
Is there, and I would imagine this may come up, uh, when we discuss it in further, but is there any cost recovery from the city standpoint when something like this happens?
So through our membership, through the Abandoned Vehicle Abatement Authority, we do have access to some funds. Um, we receive an annual notice from the county that states what our allocation is for cost recovery. Uh, this year, our allocation, which is based upon the prop, the, uh, population of the city, this year's cost recovery allocation is approximately twelve thousand dollars. And we are, um, uh, collecting all of the data right now to turn in the reports to the county to, to receive reimbursement for the things that we have, have funded for abatement. Um, some of the abatement can be done through our contract with the waste haulers. And then there are also times where we don't have that, uh, option, so, um, I would say annually, outside of our contract, we spend about forty thousand dollars a year on illegal dumping.
But there's nothing that we can go after the owner in regards to, like, for this? But there's nothing that we can go after the owner in regards to, like for this?
If we have a code enforcement action, absolutely, cost recovery is, is allowed for. Unfortunately, that is a time-consuming process, and you don't get the kind of quick response that you get when you're just working collaboratively with the property owner who lets you on the property and is working with you. So that's, that's the tension there, but as we look at updating ordinances, we'll definitely look to maximize cost recovery as much as we absolutely can.
Awesome, thank you.
I did have a question, Mr. Jones, if you could go back one slide. I, I wanted to use this as well, it's my new toy I just picked up, right here. So what is that? Did you catch something?
That's a UFO.
I was wondering, okay, all right.
Or it's one of those seagulls from Chino.
Thank you for clarifying, I appreciate it.
Thank you for catching that.
Do we have any other reports? I know Olivia doesn't want to say anything, though. Olivia.
I always have something to say. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and the public. I do want to update on behalf of the city. This, on May twelfth, it will be the first night of the Mike and the Mike series, which I always really find for Eastville residents. It will be, the Coco movie will be airing first, or showing first. And I personally have seen that movie, and it's a wonderful movie. And these events are always free to the public, and there's not a set time, it depends on what guest occurs, and so the movies will begin at dusk. That will be at Orchard Park. For other venues, more of that, if you can visit our website. On May sixteenth, which is next week, we will be hosting a group at the Chamber of Commerce Business Expo at River Fair, Costco will also be present. We do have a fun update for Costco all week, and so later on in the report. But the Business Expo will be on May sixteenth from five thirty P M. to eight P M. At Alana Roosevelt High School. That same day, on May sixteenth, will be our next planning commission meeting, at six P M. here at Roosevelt Park Elementary. On May seventeenth, we will have our monthly Parks Commission meeting here at Roosevelt Parks at six P M. On May twenty seventh, our Public Safety Commission meeting will be here at six P M. as well. I really want to encourage everyone to take advantage of our upcoming pre-residential cleanup and people shredding event. We are looking forward to this event, we should have a great turnout. It's going to be an obvious theme on our central media expo. And we are looking for volunteers, so if you are interested in volunteering, please contact me, or City Hall, if you don't have my contact information, you can contact me directly. But we are doing something new with our volunteer signups, we have purchased signup.com. So it's going to be a more efficient way to collect signups for volunteer opportunities, not just for this, but for other opportunities in the future, for community events. So stay tuned for that link, I'll be sending it soon. And June fifth, as you all know, is Election Day, but it also is our Limonite Intergovernmental Project Business Workshop in the evening at six P M. So after you vote, go on and head down to that event. It's going to be focused on our businesses and the communication plan that we will have for them during that project. The next State of the City, this year's State of the City will be on Tuesday, July twenty fourth, at six P M. at Alana Roosevelt High School. And we have some really exciting things to share, and so we'll get at that. But we're about a month and a half out from Costco's grand opening, and we can't believe it, though, like just yesterday, they started breaking around and grading. So they have received over five thousand applications, and they actually don't get all that many total. They have because there's just so many stops kept team after five thousand applications for specific locations. So I think that's pretty amazing, and a lot of applications were turned into pre- Eastville residents, which, by the way, they are focusing first on Eastville residents in their recruitment process to provide more job opportunity to our, our own community. And then in addition to the over five thousand applications, we, they also received over four hundred transfer requests. I remember ones to Eastville, I don't blame them. And our polo contest, the polo design contest is closing tomorrow at five P M. And we have over twenty six girls, and it's been really fun to see all these artists coming to City Hall and turning their artwork, and it's going to be a tough call, but we have a lot of great artwork to choose from. And then lastly, the communications team is in the process of drafting a conference. That will be back on our first initial sample survey that came out in the end of March, or the end of February of this year, so stay tuned for that. That was the last, but I want to remind everyone to follow us on social media. We have really exciting things to share. Most recently, we posted our video on, in celebration of National Youth Civil Rights Week. So if you haven't checked that video out, it just posted a few hours ago. And it highlights our very honest business, Mr. Clark here is Steven I D R. He's the superstar of the video actually, so check it out after the meeting if you haven't done so. And that's all I have, and I am happy to answer any questions that you have.
Just a quick comment on the community cleanup, so that's where people can actually practice legal dumping. Okay, just wanted to clarify that, okay.
For free. Appreciate the update, thank you so much. Thanks for your hard work.
Just one comment on the, the community cleanup, I did reach out to the community development, community development, community outreach coordinator for Vanish Point, they were going to make an announcement on the twentieth, so that's why she wanted the information. So hopefully, between that timeframe, they should get some volunteers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other updates, reports? Okay, this time, we're going to be, thank you for all the hard work that you guys do. Moving to item eleven, City Council Communications Committee Reports. Sir? No?
I'm good, sir.
Mr. Plot.
No, I'm good, I, Mayor Potem Rigby, are you going to discuss the parks?
I think you are.
Just, I want to put this to public, you know, basically, it's the part two discussion that we're having from our last Parks Commission meetings is about basically vacating the deputy, Parks Deputy position. And so just, you know, want to bring that to the awareness of the public, that does, even though it is a contract with J C S D, it affects our city greatly. And any support that we can get on to help maintain, to have a voice and have a say in that, to help maintain to, maintain to have a deputy at our parks would be, because that's, it's in jeopardy right now. So, you know, anybody out there that wants to come out and support that, you know, let's, yeah, reach out to J C S D, let them know, again, this is the Parks Commission meeting tomorrow, but that's what's up for discussion, so love to get all the support we can get.
Next Thursday.
Sorry, next Thursday, apologize. And that's it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rush?
Yeah, actually, a few things, W R C O G, there's a discussion on the way that they want to change to calculate tump fees. I don't know if we're aware of this or not, I wasn't aware of it until the time, and a little bit of whining and complaining about how much time they spend in, they say, answering the same question over and over. So there's some options that were put on the table, trying to get to them here. This is going to go to the planning, public works tack, city engineers tack, and then to the city managers tack for review. Essentially, they would like to take over the entire calculation process to streamline it and have kind of a single source. So option one would be that W R C O G calculates all project fees, so a developer wouldn't go to planning or public works, they go directly to W R C O G, and they have one source of information, bless you. Bless you.
Thank you.
Second option would be that W R C O G just takes over all non-residential fees and leaves residential fees to the cities or to the county. Residential's a little easier and not very subjective, where like when you get into calculating gas stations and canopies and all that stuff. Third option is to calculate fees as it is in the handbook and keep the existing process going right now. Fourth option would just be to verify exemptions, and that was really kind of the crux of the matter is because I don't think we've had an issue, but obviously past issues with Beaumont and some other cities where there may be a development agreement that provides certain exemptions or, you know, the, the city staff feels that a particular use is exempt. Vanish Point Church, for example, will go through this, you know, what buildings are exempt for religious purposes, what aren't, that's a real nebulous, you know, church is going to say everything, we might say half, so that they would just go through and verify the exemptions. So it was, there was no action, there was a lot of back and forth. Some cities are very interested in keeping it close to the chest, others don't care. So this will be circulating through the committees for opinion recommendations, and it'll eventually come back to the executive committee. So that was W R C O G, and R C T C, the item that we had for the fifteen was approved. That was the budget amendment for additional one million dollars to S B one thirty-two funds for Hamner Bridge and Limonite, so that went through, flying colors, no issues there. And then there were two agreements with the contractor for the I fifteen, so. I think that was it, that was it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Mr. Rigby?
Thank you, just a couple of quick things, I just wanted to, he's not here still, but the chamber hosted the prayer breakfast last week, it was a great event. Thank you, everyone, staff that was there, Sheriff's Department had a good turnout there. Everyone, I think it was a great event, well-run, really good event. Tomorrow is the Eastville Schools meeting, and so next city council will have a report on that. Also, and maybe Lieutenant Martin can shed more light on this, but on Tuesday is the National Peace Officer Day, and there is a ceremony in Riverside somewhere that I think the Sheriff's Department is part of or sponsoring or putting on or something.
Yes, it'll be in downtown Riverside, right next to the, between the Old Courthouse and Robert Presley Detention Center. I don't have the exact time, it's usually right around six o'clock.
Awesome, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So the communications portion of this, part of the last agenda item was that rushed nature of the appointment process. So I would like in, to ask that an item be brought back before the council relating to rotation, how we address rotation of the mayor position here. So that there is not that last minute question as to who is going to fill what role. And I think it would help, well, it would have helped, I know, in that last instance in the rushed nature of appointments. So I would like to see that come back before council to weigh in on that. As for updates, the town hall meeting, we had, had it last night here. It was a successful meeting, I think, good turnout, good, a lot of great questions. And it was a little bit warm, though, in the room, go figure. And there were even members from the school district here, we should have talked to them about that. Anyway, at the meeting, though, we did recognize our animal control officer, Mark Viziac. And he is completing his tenure with the city and moving on. And it was good to be able to recognize him for his seven-plus years with the city of Eastville. And we are definitely going to miss him. Also, since our last council meeting, there was Eastville Band Showcase, was able to attend that. So much fun, all the different schools bringing together their bands in one room. A lot of proud parents were there, and rightfully so, and they were playing some amazing music. And I was happy to be able to recognize him tonight. Councilmember Rigby was there, or Mayor Potem Rigby was there with me, and he brought his son. And it was, it was a lot of fun. And we hope to get them in the rose parade this year, hence that video earlier. Also, I understand that W R C O G is looking to do the C C A meeting that's going to be taking place, and that's a community choice aggregation program. The reason I mention this, I ran into some W R C O G staff today, and they said, hey, we know one of the council members isn't going to be able to make it, and we would like, we want two council members there. So anybody, the, the community choice aggregation program, I know that one council member is going at this point, but I want to put it out there. Anybody else that has an interest, it's on May seventeenth from noon to two at W R C O G headquarters. Anybody have a desire?
I had considered going, but I will be at another event.
Okay, so now we have two positions, okay, for that meeting.
Well, I, I think I decline, because I pretty much know it backwards and forwards as far as what they've explained, so opportunity for everyone else.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's kind of wonky, so I mean...
You said May, May seventeenth?
May seventeenth, noon to two.
Yeah, I can do that.
I don't know if I can yet.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll take this offline, we don't need a decision right now. I just promised them that I would extend the invite, so I'm doing that. All right, SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. In fact, we have a staff member from SCAG here today and an Eastville resident, so hence my favorite SCAG employee. Houston is here, and, and also one of my favorite residents. But we have, we had the SCAG General Assembly, it took place last week.
Was you favorite resident?
You are, you are, you are. And just don't tell anybody, I'm going to steal Son's line, he said, don't tell anybody but you're my favorite resident or elected member. But anyway, inside joke, bad joke, moving forward. So SCAG General Assembly took place last week, and everybody here up on the dais attended. And I think it was an awesome showing from our city council. We also had staff members there, and there was a lot of great information shared at the workout session, at the breakout sessions, and great networking opportunity as well. And I have the honor and privilege of being able to serve at SCAG, but I'm really happy that everybody else was able to come out and participate. And with that, too, I'm very excited to share that, being reappointed to chair the legislative community, which Houston helps out on a great deal at SCAG. And so I'm looking forward to another year of that. So when I say I've been reappointed, that means we have been reappointed, that means the District Four has been reappointed to that position. So any ideas that you guys have, please share them with me, and I would, I would love to take that back to SCAG. Riverside County Board of Supervisors Meeting took place yesterday. There was a contract amendment that was brought forward in relation to the Sheriff's Department contract that the city of Eastville has. I was able to attend, our city manager, Michelle Nissen, was able to attend as well. As it turns out, it turned out to be much ado about nothing, we were worried, nobody pulled the item. So the contract has been, no discussion, is moving forward. But as, of course, all of you know, that does not mean that we are now going to instantly get those additional patrol hours and that additional officer that we have asked for. But it is now in the pipeline, so we're excited about that, and... Yes, sir, Mr. Rigby?
Do we have any speculation as to when that will go into effect?
Next week?
Two weeks from now.
No, once they open up that position, or it's called a position control number, that individual has to go through the academy, that number, that hiring of that individual has to go through the academy, and then once they get out of the academy, then they have to go through training, and after they get off training, then that'll be available. So we're talking probably, approximately six, six months.
Six months, okay. But I, I, I do also want to say that it was a team effort in getting us to this point. That's a hundred, that's an additional ten patrol hours that we're going to see, bringing us to a hundred. An additional motor officer, which I think is very important for our city. Their response times are amazing, particularly... Their response times are amazing, particularly during emergencies. They are often the first on scene. Um, and to have two, uh, particularly with all the schools that we have, um, it's important. So, and I appreciate the, uh, the Board of Supervisors, um, passing this, pushing it forward. But I appreciate working with everybody up here, our city staff, our commitment to public safety. RCA, that is the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority. And it's easier to say RCA. Uh, we had our meeting yes, on, uh, Monday. And, um, the whole point of RCA is to mitigate against development, uh, the, and save endangered species within Western Riverside County. And it is a, a big plan. The plan covers one point two six million acres. Um, and we are well on our way to doing that. Part of that acreage is the Santa Rosa Plateau. And the species of the month happened to be a plant this time. And I, I do this for Brandon because he loves hearing about these things.
Actually, I already do it.
So it was, it was a San Miguel savory. It's in the mint family. Check it out. Look it up online. It is blooming this time of year. You can go check it out in the Santa Rosa Plateau, uh, between March and July. And they also have some other wildflowers up there. If you haven't gone up there and done a hike, do so. Alright, last but not least, the League of California Cities, uh, Riverside Division will be having its general membership meeting Monday, the fourteenth. Hope you all can make it. Alright, that concludes my comments. And more importantly, that includes, that concludes this meeting. So we are adjourned, and the next meeting of the Eastville City Council Meeting will be on May twenty-third, twenty eighteen, at six thirty P.M. It's amazing, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.